Good evening. Seems how the Mr. Pollan, Kansas State Wildcats are playing tonight. We'll get an early start on our board meeting.[21.11][21.11](laughter) Once in a while, Mr. Pollan and I get our knocks in a little bit.
But not too often.
Not too often.
Just during football.[29.59][29.59](laughter)
Called a meaning order.[31.59][31.59](laughter) Ms. Hibbs, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Ashley.
Here.
Dr. Daniels.
Here.
Mrs. Felter.
Here.
Mrs. Martin.
Here.
Mrs. Parker.
Sure.
Mr. Pollan.
Here.
Mr. Shear.
Here.
Would you all rise for a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dr. Berry informs me that we have members from the Manchester Park Site Council and Principal Susan to group with us this evening, so why don't you all stand up? And we appreciate you taking time out of your schedules before the holiday seasons to come in and watch aboard me. Thank you very much.[91.22][91.22](applause) We like for the public to know that these are your schools and we are your Board of Education, so it's nice for you to come and see this evening. On our agenda this evening, the first item of business would be informational presentations. Our first one would be 2.01 on the agenda, which is the Senior Exit Survey results from 2010 and 11. And presenting this evening on that would be Dr. Allison Banikowski, Deputy Superintendent, and Dr. Gretchen Shirk, Director of General Administration, High School Programs. Dr. Banikowski?
Thank you very much, Mr. Parker, and members of the board, and we're pleased to have an opportunity to talk with you tonight about a piece of data that we've been collecting for a little while in the district, but maybe have not shared that information or used the information quite as much as we would like to, so this is just an initial part of that. Certainly, two of our core values, one is data-driven continuous improvement and one is lifelong learning. And this really aligns with that core value of data-driven continuous improvement, an opportunity to look at data and see what it says to us and celebrate all the good things, look at what we can have it as an opportunity for improvement. And what we're going to share with you tonight is what we call the Senior Exit Survey. And the Senior Exit Survey is given to all seniors in a variety of formats we've tried. Last, it's the last month of the senior year that that is provided, which is, for some people, a little scary time to give a survey. It is an electronic survey, and it is anonymous at our four high schools. There are approximately 40 questions, and there used to be considerably more questions. Last year, we had a small subcommittee, several people on it that are in the room here this evening, that went through and called out the questions that we thought were the most important for us to get information on. We'll also take a look at that again this spring to make sure this is what we want to ask. We'll probably also make some changes in our comments section, the way we tally and look at comments, where you can kind of see some of the areas that we look at, from instruction to overall perception. This certainly isn't just a measure of senior high school, even though most of the questions do relate to, you know, how was your high school maintained, the physical plant, but it also really looks at the culmination of the educational program of students here in the district from a very young age to being our older seniors, if you will. We had 1,313 responses, and that's about little over 76 percent of the senior class. And from those of you that have done surveys before, you know that 10, 20, 30 percent is very good, but 76 percent is good. Dr. Shirk and I talked earlier today, of course, that isn't quite where we want it to be, and we would like a little more response, but really, it's a very valid survey, being at that high percentage rate that we have there. We'd like to take a look a little bit at the first area. As has been tradition, we have looked at As and Bs, and that's the way Dr. George had led us through the Baldur's Process, that you usually combine the first top two scores. Sometimes in some surveys, it's been the strongly agree and agree have been combined together. But let's take a little look at the areas in preparation and how our students felt about that. Computer technology skills is very high, at 84 percent of our seniors. In the last month of school, I keep mentioning that, rated 84 percent. Reading comprehension, 88 percent. Written communication, 87 percent. Teamwork and collaboration, 85 percent. And leadership, an 81 percent. So overall, we are very pleased about these results. In fact, we stepped back and we had some celebrations about that. Certainly, we always want to take a look at that and a look at the differentiation between the As and Bs, and then also the percentage of students that rated us below that. But those were very positive results related to our instructional program. We also had an area of the strongly agree, and looking for agreement on that. And you can see, even a well-maintained, most of the time was a very positive result. It actually was more positive than we thought it would have been, and we are very pleased about that because, you know, sometimes people say students don't take notice of the cleanliness of their building, but obviously, they do. The school cafeteria menu, and again, we were pleasantly surprised that this was this high, because if there's one area that sometimes takes quite a bit of dinging, it's food preparation and food availability. So that was quite high. Maybe not as high as we'd like it to be, but considering some of the other scores that we've seen related to food, that we thought that was quite high. Positive and safe learning environment, this is so important to us as we're creating structures for learning and how important it is to take a look at those positive learning climates, and we know that it's very important, and we are very pleased with those results. My teachers care about me, and for seniors to be able to say that about their teachers, that puts it at a very high, and really correlates with things that we get from our parents' surveys, as well as what we get from our students' communities that care surveys. So there's some comparison results there. Do you have internet at home? And we kind of put this here a little bit, because this was a little bit higher percentage than we thought, 95 percent, and that was across all four of our high schools, of course, varied a little bit. But it was very strong at all high schools, and we were surprised about that. You know, whether the speed of that internet is as good as we'd like it to be for instructional purposes, that was higher than we anticipated when the Principals and Dr. Shirk and I went over these results. And the last one that I share with you just generally is that students had an opportunity to grade their teachers, and that is very similar to what happens in the Phi Delta Capen Survey, opportunity for parents to grade different aspects of the school system. But this was allowing students to do that, and you can see that 89 percent of them gave an A or a B to their teachers, and the highest percentage was in the A category. With that, let's talk a little bit about 21st century. If you clicked that you are in the 21st century program, you are taken to some additional questions. Dr. Shear?
Thank you. We ask our seniors to reflect on their experience with 21st century programs. We also survey the underclassmen separately, but this is just the senior results. And as we promote generally, about 25 percent of the students in the Olatha High Schools participate in our 21st century programs. We also then ask questions about, and these questions have been asked since actually the beginning of the program, based on the original factors that we used to develop the programs. And as you can see from these, again, we're asking the students to rate in terms of strongly agree or agree. Two very high areas, my studies in the program challenged me. 92 percent of the students said yes, which is, to me, a good indicator that the students have made good choices in the programs. We know with the retention rate of students within the programs that they're happy when they're there, and then obviously, being challenged while they're there. And then also, not only are they challenged, but they're also supported. So the students are reporting that in the program, though they may be challenged, they do receive the support that they need to be successful. Question that we're required to ask, and we report to the Kansas State Department of Education, has to do with students' plans after high school. And our students report, as seniors, in May, that 92 percent of them are planning to attend post-secondary education, either in a two-year or a four-year institution. They're also asked to indicate if they're planning to join the military, be employed, or basically unsure. And then we thought you might be interested to know where the schools are that the students are reporting that they are planning to attend. You notice heavy duty on Kansas, which would be very probably typical, our hometown Johnson County Community College kind of at the top of the list there. But you'll also notice that Brigham Young is mentioned, and the University of Mid-Canada Kansas City.
One of the areas that we look at is rating our overall high school experience, and you can see 89 percent, we really wanted that to be 90 percent, but I'm only kidding. We were very pleased that that was an overall very strong rating as we looked at that. As I said, we looked at comments from seniors, and predominantly, most of the comments were positive, but there was no way of categorizing the comments, and that's something that we're looking at doing a little bit differently, is then have an opportunity to take over this area, to look at this so that we can come up with percentages and categorization of our comments. But really, I picked out four comments, just randomly out of the positive comments, because they kind of gave a little more depth, a little bit more than great, good job, and that were, obviously, had some other comments that I actually couldn't understand. I think they were texting. But looking at some of these comments of talking about their high school experience, they felt safe, and in many ways, felt that they had a second home with the teachers they could trust, and that was a nice comment to be received. So many opportunities at grade, again, this is a 21st century high school program student, preparing them for the future. And also, I like the ending of this, that a club's organization that you can be involved in, and that's something we really try to reinforce, that the more involved you are in your high school educational opportunity, taking advantage of those opportunities is great for your instruction as well. We also had a comment that talked about the staff striving for excellence and encouraging students to do the same, and they had a great high school experience. And the last comment that places students anywhere else, made it so that the class graduates, they are ready for the next step in the world, and kind of nice comments. Certainly, there were some comments that were more, very few of them, but a few that were somewhat instructive, and some that would have been difficult to do much planning from, a comment of what? Some that were not most appropriate words, but others they've used in text, I know, about the governor, so.[736.48][736.48](laughter) The bad words are just nondescript kind of words. So we had a few of those. All comments were provided, as well as all scores were provided, to the building administrators to be provided with their building leaderships teams, as well as the comments from their school as well, as well as the average for the district, so they had something to compare it to. So we had quite a bit of discussion about the Senior Exit Survey this year and the results, and we hope to make it an annual event and making sure it is asking the kind of questions that will help lead us, as well as all the other data that we collect, to looking at our educational program and providing us guidance in that area. Certainly, we want our high school experience, as well as our educational experience, to have that road sign for success, and that's what we're looking for. So with that, that was just a brief little overview to provide you an opportunity to look at the Senior Exit Survey, and we would be happy to entertain any questions.
Dr. Daniels?
Thank you for this information. It was very helpful. I wanted to ask a couple of questions and then make a comment. I'm assuming because you wanted it to be anonymous, you didn't ask demographic information in terms of...
Yeah, we wanted to be very honest. We did ask, of course, students, we made the one question that's required by KSDE, not anonymous, but the rest was anonymous, and we were able to do that technologically. We did ask what school you did attend.
And the only reason I bring that up is because I think if you've got roughly, what, about 25 percent who didn't respond, I would just wonder if those were the students who are less attached to their buildings, and whether or not there's information there that would be helpful for planning in the future. But I recognize that it then takes away the anonymity of the response. And then the other piece to that is a question I think that might be important to consider including, and my other board members may agree or disagree, is that we continue to become more and more diverse as a student population, and I think we want a question that somehow reflects that students feel comfortable that their diversity, their ethnicity, is respected and valued. And I'm not quite sure how to word that, but I just think we're a very diverse population, and somehow, we want to make sure that if there are negative responses that we're, and maybe there won't be, but I want to make sure that we're capturing that.
And, you know, one of the things that we went back and looked at, as you brought forth that question, is to look and see if there were comments in that particular area. There weren't, so we're kind of pleased on that.
And that may be all there is to it, yeah.
But certainly something to consider in that area. We do ask a question somewhat related to that on the staff climate survey.
Right.
On that piece there. One of the things, too, we've noticed that three of the high schools did one kind of administration, one did a different administration, and that one was probably not the best administration choices, and so we're modifying that a little bit. So our percentage probably came a lot from that one particular high school, so I think we're changing that up a little bit for this year.
Well, thank you. Again, I thought the information was very helpful.
Do we have any questions in the survey in regard to whether the seniors felt they received adequate access to our counseling staff?
Yes.
Because I know that's been an area of concern, as we have continued to grow, but maybe not been able to increase our counseling staff in proportion to that growth.
We have two questions, I think, that kind of follow along that where Ari and Dr. Shirk and I were looking at those, the college and college career planning and preparation, which doesn't follow only to our guidance counselor, but it has a heavy emphasis in that area. 77 percent of our high school seniors rated that an ARB. An area that we're trying to take a closer look at, and maybe a different way of looking at, is the financial aid and scholarships. Again, not just guidance counselors, but a heavy load on the guidance counselor area that, and we only had 66 percent As and Bs. There's a plethora of information on financial aid and scholarships available to our students, but that taking that step to actually do it is very challenging. It's challenging, I know, for our parents oftentimes, you see a lot of that on our websites for our different high schools. So we're going to take a look at that, and Dr. Shirk is looking at that area as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for doing this. I think it's a great tool, if designed right, and of course, we're still fine-tuning that. But I particularly think this is critical, because these are our primary customers, they're the reason we exist here. And so I would love to see great effort put into the design, and then how do we take the data we receive and put it to work and tweak and improve? I mean, we're excellent, but there's always room to improve. And the 21st century programs, I'd love to see more in-depth questions. Did they help from the student's perspective with scholarships? Would it be something you would do again? Was it hard to transition to a new school if you had to, you know, change from the high school you would have gone to? So I'd love to see a committee dig, drill a little deeper specifically on that topic.
And we do do a little bit more, I think as Dr. Shirk said, freshmen and sophomores, new students into the program, I have a survey different from this particular one, so there's a plethora of information that I know that your group is working on.
And we also didn't include the entire section on 21st century programs just in this PowerPoint.
Okay.
So there are more questions and an opportunity for students to comment as well.
Good.
So again, there is more data that we work with, and then our program facilitators, our principals and others also review the data, so they're informed as well.
Wonderful. I thought that the feedback was very positive considering senioritis. I mean, they're like, just get me out of here, you know? And we all remember what that's like, but thank you very much for administering this and doing it.
Thank you very much.
I'm not done.
Okay, Mr. Pollan, do you have questions?
No questions. I would just like to basically make a couple of statements about the, my teachers care about me 90 percent. I would love to meet the 10 percent, because I haven't met them yet. You know, every place I go, you know, I'm just so impassioned by the passion that our teachers have for our kids, and so I'd love to meet the 10 percent that, you know, weren't qualified here. You know, the, Mr. Parker made a great address to the joint council we had with the Chamber and the City of Olatha, to the legislators in our area, and I just want to commend him for that, because he showed them the passion that we have in our school district for our kids and what it takes for us to educate our kids. And, you know, I just think this is a huge reflection on what he tried to imply to our legislators, that, you know, hey, you know, we are trying as hard as we can, and we've got great people here. And so I think these results show that, and I just want to really, you know, reflect on that, you know, 90 percent say, hey, we love the impact that our teachers have on us. Like I said, I'd still love to meet the 10 percent that don't feel that way, so anyway, just wanted to share that.
Well, it's kind of like the cafeteria variety. We have broad variety, so a lot of times, it's, did they like the mail that day? Did a teacher come down on them that day? So it's pretty subjective in that, so.
Yeah, if you look over the overall scheme of the results, they're so positive, and that's why I want us to make sure that we're using the data, that we're using both the positive parts, so that we celebrate what's going right, and keep doing that part, and look at those parts that we want to tweak and improve upon, and look at both aspects of that. Otherwise, collecting the data, just to collect data, is not the purpose of it at all.
And just one general comment about the survey and the overall results. When you stop and think about a 17-year-old senior in May, all they're ready to do is move on, when you really stop and think about it. But for a young lady or for a young man to be this attentive to a survey like this and to be this connected, and this understanding and this appreciative of what they have really experienced in the last four years is kind of amazing. And so it just didn't happen on that day they took a survey. It was obviously a process through their whole high school career that gave them that motivation to respond in a positive manner to the survey, because obviously, that's the way they felt, because they'd tell us how they really felt.[1311.63][1311.63](laughter) Probably more so than adults.
They were going to graduate to the students.
Any other comments on that report? Thank you for that report. Anybody have a comment, or everybody okay on it? Okay, thank you. Good report. Thank you for bringing that to us. Next on the agenda would be a report in regards to the Technical Education Center update, and bringing that report this evening will be Dr. Marlon Berry, our superintendent, again, Dr. Gretchen Shirk, Ms. Kathy Musgrave, who's Administrator of Career and Technical Education, and Mr. Greg Thomason, our construction manager, as long as with representatives from HTK Architects who are designing the building. Dr. Berry?
Well, I'm not going to get in the way of what you're about to hear and see, because it's exciting.
Could you kind of just give us a little background on what we're going to, for the benefit of the public, you know, what we're doing and why we're doing it, and how we got here? Kind of a little history lesson.
I'll give you a quick one here. There was a task force that did a study and spent quite a bit of time looking at our current facilities at Mill Creek, and the recommendation that came up is that we should have new facilities for the current programs that we have there. So our community was very supportive and passed the bond issue in 2007 that is allowing us to construct a new technical education center. A lot of work has been done, and the two ladies standing there, along with Greg Thomason and others, have spent so much time in working with the staff members in that building and community members. We have advisory groups for each of our areas in these programs that have spent time giving us some feedback as well. So we are on the path to building an exciting building that you're actually going to get to see tonight in 3D fashion, even a little bit of a videotype that will take you through the building. This is new territory for us to be able to share with the Board of Education a building before we construct it. So it's very exciting, and they're going to share a little bit more about the transition from the current program that's in a metal building attached to John P. St. John High School, and we're going to be moving to exciting new digs, so it's going to be great to hear about tonight.
It is. Thank you very much.
Dr. Shirk, just one quick comment also. Some would say to us, well, a 2007 bond issue, and this is the end of 2011, that's been four years, another, it's been five years. What has taken so long? Well, along the way, we built a middle school, I think we built an elementary school, we added on to our four high schools, did the reconfiguration of our high schools, moved our sixth graders to our middle school and our ninth graders to our high school. So we've been busy the last four years, and unfortunately, this is a project that we, I would have loved to seen the project move forward quicker and faster, but it's better to do it slow and get it right, rather than try to do too many things at one time and not get anything right. So we managed a lot of other projects along the way, and so this is a project that we can be proud of when we're finished.
Absolutely, and we couldn't disagree with you more and couldn't be more excited about the opportunity to be moving forward on this project today. Just very quickly, Dr. Berry kind of mentioned what we're going to do. I want to share just a little bit about an overview of the pathways model, because we are kind of transitioning our system from what we've known as VE2 vocational program to a pathways model. Ms. Musgrave's going to share some information with you about the programs, and then we'll have our exciting video clip 3D walkthrough of the projected new facility. This is our, well, very lovingly referred to as our sunflower graphic that many of you have seen before. This is a federal initiative that comes to us through the Perkins legislation. In the center are the foundation, knowledge and skills, and as we've talked about before, you'll see several in there that you would recognize as being foundations, base level information and beliefs that students would need regardless of what kind of career or any type of work that they'd be involved in as adults, ethics, teamwork, problem solving, critical thinking, many skills that we want all students to have. Around the outside, those six petals, smaller petals, are the career clusters. Those are the general pathways, and you can see that they are very general and not specific in terms of listings, just a welding program, an auto collision program, fashion, or any of our others that we've had in place for a number of years. What you see around the outside, then, is what we have taken and superimposed are all of our variety of career and technical experiences, programs and activities that we have available for our students. And you'll see some that are offered in all four high schools. If you look to the left in the purple, under Business Marketing and Management, we have marketing programs. Those are very popular. They are fully enrolled at all four high schools, so it makes good sense to have them in for all four buildings. If you look then down in the lower left-hand corner, our early childhood career opportunities, we have two different sections. Those are half-day programs, both at Harmony and Heartland. And again, given that kind of a facility, it may...
Dr. Shirk, for the benefit of the public, would you tell them what, would you tell us what Harmony and Heartland are?
Yes.
Thank you.
Those are our early childhood centers, and it made good sense, we thought, as a board and as a community, to place the programs there. And again, they're half-day programs, so the students have the opportunity, our high school students, to interact with the preschoolers that are in those buildings. And then, like our 21st century programs are also represented, you'll see aerospace and engineering over on the industrial manufacturing, engineering systems cluster area. Again, a program that we placed at one high school, based primarily on facility, could be based on the fact that in terms of enrollment, though it's a well-enrolled program, didn't know that it would enroll strongly at all four high schools. So kind of our thinking and rationale around all the programs that we have, but I did want to make, really point out the variety, there are options in all of the clusters. And then, many of these programs are available to students in all of our high schools, and as well as, you know, some of the Mill Creek Center and site-based programs are available to students outside our districts. So what I want to do now is give Kathy a chance to talk to you...
Can we stop right there?
We can.
Thank you, and see if the board members have any questions in regards to those areas, rather than before we move on?
Sure.
That's really the essence of our careers program.
It is. And it's broad, and I guess the other point we'd want to make is that as we move to the pathways model, again, mentioning again, it's not just welding for two or three hours a day, but it's welding and it's technical learning, it's also those foundation skills. So it's a full, full program that really engages students in something broader than just the technical skills of the occupation itself.
This is important for the community to understand, that these are programs that we need in a community, because these provide opportunities for a lot of students who may not be particularly interested in a four-year degree, but certainly could be interested in something that would give them a lifelong career. But also, it's a federal mandate that we have to have this program in place, and we have to develop the program, and as time goes on, we could be adding additional classes and curriculum to this. I know we're approving one curriculum tonight, that's an enhancement of one of these programs as well. But as we go on, we'll be expanding the program to meet the needs of more students.
And I think, yeah, thank you, I didn't mean to cut you off there. Ms. Musgrave will speak to the fact that we're always looking into the future, because we know workforce needs are always changing, so I want to give her a chance to speak to some of that.
Board members, everybody ready to move on then? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shirk. As she said, yes, we do have four programs that have been, most recently, at Mill Creek Center. We have moved Construction Trades, which is one of those four programs, who's been partnering with Habitat for Humanity among... with Habitat for Humanity among City of Olathe, et cetera, over the past couple of years. It has already moved to Olathe North, which of course is the site of the new building. The other three programs, Welding Technology, Auto Collision Technology and Auto Technology, are still located at Mill Creek along with my little box office that Dr. Berry has seen. It's very delightful right now. I'm in an auto tech bay. So that's a lot of fun until the new building is built. But we did get out of the big building, the brick building. These are, as Dr. Shirk said, center-based programs for a half-day, just like the other programs she mentioned. The three programs that are left now in the old metal building at the Mill Creek site are three-hour programs, half a day. And that means that not just the programs Dr. Shirk talked about, but these programs allow students to stay at their home school. And then they are transported half-day to the site of the program. The enrollment is from other districts as well. I counted today and we have, as I speak now, for the three programs that are left at the Mill Creek site, we have 16 high schools represented in the Johnson County area. And so that is spreading those programs out for many, many students in our area. The enrollment was full and had waiting lists at the beginning of the year. We have, as I think Dr. Berry mentioned a few minutes ago, very active advisory committees for every program. These are made up of business and industry partners, many of which are in our own Olathe community and our surrounding communities such as Overland Park and Lenexa. These are also made up of post-secondary folks, students, teachers, et cetera. And they're very, very important to us. They provide us with those opportunities for internships, with opportunities for supplies and equipment that is donated. And they have been very active with us in working on the new facility as well. We also have active student leadership groups. We participate in Skills USA. And in fact, this year, out of the seven state officers, two are from Mill Creek Center and are Olathe East and Olathe South students. We also participate in competition with Ford AAA. And that is something that the students actually have to qualify for through a computer testing program. And we have been in the final 10 every year since I've been there and hope to be this year as well. We do participate at the state, regional and national levels. We've had competitors, as you have seen, come before the board that have been first in the state every year since I've been here. So that's kind of exciting as well. We have many post-secondary, post-high school opportunities. And we just, a couple of weeks ago, had a college day that had 15 post-secondary institutions at the Mill Creek site, believe it or not, in the metal building. And our students rotated through many of those post-secondary opportunities. Scholarships are many to be had in this field, coming from everything from business and industry to Mill Creek scholarships, to Skills AAA, Ford AAA scholarships. Our new facility is going to really help us. We are cramped both in the dirty labs and in our classrooms. Our classrooms are so tight, we can only get 16 students. And that's cramping them in table situations where they really don't have enough room. Our technology is very, very old-school. And so we're looking much forward to having the technology that goes along with the new technology in these fields so that we can utilize what is in the other schools right now in the best way possible to help our students learn. The public access of the new building will be wonderful because we will have some areas where the public can come in as a commons, where we can have large group meetings, et cetera. So we are very, very excited about this opportunity and can't wait to see what we're going to see next. So I want to introduce Greg Thomason.
I won't take much of your time tonight. As Dr. Berry mentioned, we've invited-
We've been waiting five years, so you've got as much time as you want.
I won't take much of your time. We've asked Don Pruitt and Travis Pelangi from HTK Architects-
It's been more like 10 years. Go ahead, Greg.
We've asked Don Pruitt and Travis Pelangi from HT Architects to join us tonight to share some computer-generated renderings of the new building and also a 3D computer model of the building. I think their presentation covers most of the questions, but certainly we save a period at the end for questions in case you have any. Once the model starts, it's hard to stop, so we may have to answer at the end.
Mr. Thomason, could you just mention when we expect it to be open?
Fall of 2013.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Members of the board, Dr. Berry, we are very excited to be here, to be able to show you the latest images that we've developed of the Technical Education Center design.
For the benefit of our viewing audience, could you just introduce yourselves, please? Thank you.
Sure. I am Don Pruitt, principal in charge of the project. And I have with me Travis Pelangi, that is the project manager on the project, who really does all the work. But I'll take credit wherever I can. This image that we have up here is just to orientate you folks. I'm sure most of you have probably seen this before, but you know, it's a visual of the floor plan sitting on the site. And as you know, the site is on the north high school campus at the intersection of Nelson Road and Kansas City Road on the northeast corner of the campus. And this actually is a Google Earth aerial map that shows existing high school parking on the west. And north is up, so west is to the left there. You know, the building is set back into the site. And when we first were getting into this project and looking at the site, we kind of considered it to be challenging. But as architects, we always appreciate a challenge. And actually, the topography slopes 15 feet from the west to the east. And with the confines of the site and the sloping topography, we thought initially it might be a challenge. But actually, it worked out to be very advantageous because we were able to take advantage of that by pushing the building basically back into the hill because we're going to have to have a retaining wall anyway. So we were able to use the west wall of the building as the retaining wall. But really, what it accomplished more than anything is we're able to shield or screen the exterior vehicle project storage area by having precast concrete screen walls around it, which those concrete walls are also retaining walls. So the topography really helped us to screen that, which was really an important criteria of the overall design. And literally, you cannot see this vehicle storage yard from any point, which we think is a good accomplishment. But as you know, the programs at the facility houses are auto technology, auto collision and welding. The large spaces on the plan, on the left side there, on the west side is auto technology. In the middle is auto collision. Then on the right side or on the east is the welding. You know, we worked diligently through many extensive meetings with the steering, project steering committee, staff and the advisory committees from each program. And we arrived at this design solution, which I feel very strongly that it meets all the needs and goals that we had in place in the very beginning for this project. It's a very compact plan. You know, the classrooms are readily accessible to the lab spaces and the computer lab is between the classrooms. The administrative area is situated where, you know, it provides a secure entrance into the facility. So it accomplishes a lot of things with this particular configuration. And as with all the schools within the district, it is a very energy-efficient design. You know, we were able to utilize natural ventilation in the lab spaces. And of course, natural lighting, we're utilizing that as much as possible to reduce the energy consumption by artificial lighting. We have the energy recovery as part of the design, the HVAC design, radiant heating in the lab spaces and multi-zone HVAC systems that are energy efficient. And of course, the building envelope itself has a high performance energy level to it. What we'd like to show you is the latest images that we've been able to render. We developed, by using the building information modeling software that we use, we're able to develop this 3D model and render it to this level. So I'd like to show you these images. This one is of the, a view looking west from Nelson Road. And the building does front Nelson Road. And what I'd like to explain with this particular image is the materials that are on the building. On the left side, the orange material is a terracotta material. And I would like to add that, you know, we wanted the overall design, particularly the exterior architecture, to convey or reflect, you know, the 21st century programs that are housed in the facility. So we were able to accomplish that, I feel, by using innovative-type building construction products on the exterior skin. And so the orange material that you see is actually a terracotta. And I'm an architect, so I'm all about visuals. This is, this is an actual piece of the terracotta panel. You know, and terracotta's been used in architecture for hundreds of years, literally. But this is a new type of application where the terracotta is an extruded clay that is fired and it can be manufactured in multiple panel sizes and textures and so forth. And instead of being laid up like a clay-fired brick in mortar, it is actually mechanically fastened to the building or to the backup. The other materials that we have on the right side there, prefinished metal panels that would be very similar to the metal panels that are on the north high school entry. And would like to mention that the colors that we're probably thinking of going with on the terracotta would also be a color that would pick up one of the, there's a three-color brick blend on an existing high school. And we'd like to pick up one of those colors and match it with the terracotta. Other innovative materials that we have on the building are a fiber-seamment panel that you'll see better as we get around and go through the virtual walkthrough and then precast architectural panels that, the cement-fiber panels and the architectural precast panels help articulate the high wall that surrounds the large-volume lab spaces. And we have a lot of glass, in fact, it's virtually a glass box at the commons. And we really wanted this to be an iconic design element of the front elevation for the building. And, you know, not just serves as a commons area for the facility, for large gathering space, but also to be able to showcase, you know, the project cars and where it's literally can be a showroom, you know, for the project cars and also display cases for trophies that they won in their, that they won in their competitions. So the next image is just a little bit further up Nelson Road. And this is as you're starting to head up the entrance drive there and head towards the entrance of the building. Then this is the entrance of the building. And the white, which is really what we're thinking would be silver, just kind of rendered out this way, would be the prefinished metal panel. Like I mentioned, would be the same or similar to what's on the high school. And this is the project vehicle storage area that I was speaking about. And that, the wall that you see on the left side there, that is a precast concrete screen wall, but is also retaining earth. I mean, it is a retaining wall because since the facility's pushed back into the hill, the sloping grade is coming down on the other side of that wall, the screen area. And then the doors, overhead doors on the right side are into the lab spaces. And with the configuration that we arrived at for each lab space, we're able to drastically reduce the number of overhead doors versus what the current facility has, which is a real plus. So I'd like to show you a virtual walkthrough, or actually it's a walk-around first of this 3D model that we've developed. You go around the building and then you go inside the building. So on the left side, you're walking by the glass commons showroom area. That was the entrance to the building. Now we're walking around to the south side, or I'm sorry, the north side of the building. And that is the high wall of the auto technology space. And this model is developed on a flat ground plane, so it's not indicating the topography. So on that elevation, the grade would actually be halfway up the walls where, actually it 'd only be projecting like 12 feet out of the ground there. And this is going into the vehicle storage area. And walking around to the front of the building. And there again, the lower lighter gray band, that's the precast architectural concrete. The darker gray band is the cement-fiber panels. And then all around, all the lab spaces, we have a six-foot-high translucent wall panel that will let in a lot of natural light. But the nice thing about this translucent wall panel is that it not only lets in a lot of natural light, but it has insulation in it. So it has a high energy effect to it. So you're walking into main entrance here. This is the commons area. And next, we'll be walking into the welding lab. That's an overhead door to the left. And this is the low roof area of the welding area where the lab, I'm sorry, the welding booth would be. And then the larger volume space would be where the larger fabrication would take place. We're going outside. We don't need to go outside to get from one lab to the other, but the model does do that. So we're going outside now and going back in. Why we chose that route, I don't really know.
Sorry.
But this is the auto collision lab. And I'd like to point out that, you know, there are no columns. The roof structure is clear spanning, which allows for greater flexibility in the future, you know, if other programs happen to take place in there.
We're in technology now.
And then we just walked into the auto technology lab space that would have multiple lifts in it, tool storage, a cleaning area, a couple bays designated for demonstrations. And the model, we haven't really selected any colors yet. We know what the materials more than likely are going to be in finished materials, but the model doesn't really indicate colors. It's really just to give you a visual of the volume and the size of the spaces. This is walking down the back quarter into the commons area again. The classrooms are to the right and to the left was the back entry into the admin area. So now we're going to come around and head into the administrative area. And you could probably see Kathy sitting back in the office.
I'm never in my office.
Okay, well, that was your office.
How many square feet?
$35,600.
How many do we have now in the middle?
It's around $20,000 if you include the spaces that were in the old high school building. Is that correct?
Are we using those spaces now? So what are we using now? About, how many square feet are we using?
Around 18,000 square feet.
So we're basically doubling it? Any questions from fellow board members?
I'd love to, I know it was an extensive process for you. Could you share with us just a little bit of the process of when you first took the project on, to the input you received from the staff, how it changed your design and just sort of how it progressed, you know, just a synopsis of how it progressed from start to end?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we literally started from square one by developing the building program, the spaces that were going to be in the project and the size of those spaces. In talking with Kathy and the steering committee and, you know, Dr. Shirk and like I mentioned, we also downloaded as much information as we could from the teachers to get their input into it. You know, what spaces would you like in this facility? How do you envision using them? You know, what size do they really need to be? And then we just kind of started putting the blocks of spaces, you know, on the site. And then each time, we'd refine it a little bit more and more. And where eventually we were able to reach consensus on the spaces that were in the facility and the size and how they were going to be used and how each space related to each other. You know, for an example, is they needed a direct visual connection between the classrooms and the lab spaces because there may be one instructor that's having to kind of go back and forth. You know, so that, we establish is, we establish some very important designs- You know, so that, we establish is, we establish some very important design criteria early on during the programming phase, and then we just kept developing the conceptual ideas in more detail as we went through it.
The classrooms are, in essence, up on the second floor. Is that, no?
All of it's on one level. The classrooms are, like I just mentioned, are directly off of the lab spaces. And the computer lab is between the classrooms. There's two instructors right now. Each instructor has their, for auto-technology, each instructor has their own classroom. And so there's a classroom dedicated to welding, then a classroom dedicated to auto-collision.
Since these students go back to their home high school after they're done with their classes, are we providing a place for them to change, or clean up, or shower, anything like that? Or lockers?
At present, there really isn't anywhere. We do have some locker space available, but there will be lockers and nice restrooms for each area, and also public restrooms, which we don't have now.
Okay. And which entrance do, will students be using?
They'll be using the front entrance.
Ms. Musgrave, I just, I was, thought fifteen prosecondary schools came to the mental building. What are they going to think when they come to this one?
They're going to be wowed.
Dr. Berry, could you kind of just walk us through the thought process and how the board arrived at the north site rather than other alternative sites that we considered?
Board of Education spent a lot of time, and even in the five years that I've been here, in terms of talking about the best site. And we had talked about other locations, and not only the north part of town, where land that we didn't own, to maybe our complexes, the edges of those that we do own, and finally settled on Olathe North as being an ideal spot for us. And I think, again, the architects have found a great place that when you actually see it built, being set back in there, it's a perfect location for it. And again, we like it because of the support the school can then lend to the, to the technical education center in terms of nursing staff and other assistant principal and things like that. So it's a great location for us. I'll take this opportunity to also mention, then, you know, we occasionally run into the question where someone thinks that we're building on one site a comprehensive building for all of our 21st century programs, and we are not. And that's, you know, like maybe a neighboring district that has them all under one roof. Ours has always been a model that they've been distributed to the various high schools. And to further emphasize that, I'll tell you a quick story. That yesterday, we had students in this room from all four high schools as part of the Superintendent's Student Advisory Council, and we were talking a little bit about the fifth high school. And one of the questions immediately from one of the students was, what new 21st century programs will be in the new high school? So they fully understand that's the model that we have in Olathe, and that we will be an opportunity for additional programs when we get to that fifth high school.
Walking around the building, it looks great. What is the view from the tennis courts? What am I looking at?
It would be, on that view, it'd be your left-hand side.
I know it, but what am I seeing?
As for...
Is it the retaining wall? It would be the precast concrete screen wall around the vehicle storage yard, which is also retaining wall, so the...
I mean, because that's, that's a primary
Right.
site view, that and Nelson Road, both. So what am I seeing when I'm driving down Kansas City Road? What am I looking at when I?
Can you show us the overhead, the first slide that you had? That might be, thank you.
Yeah, there you go. What am I looking at when I'm, when I'm on the tennis courts? What am I looking at?
Coming down Kansas City Road, coming south after the roundabout, you'll be able to see a portion of the main facade of the facility and the southeast corner of it. And the further south you go on Kansas City Road, the tennis courts will start to screen a portion of the building as you start heading south as well. And then you will be able to see a portion of the concrete retaining wall, as Don mentioned.
Now, I'm not going to see a car parking lot. Okay. My question.
When you showed that to the construction committee, you had that view from the south. Do you have that with you tonight?
We do not.
Okay.
What you'll see, Mike?
Mr. Bullins, good question. It's a question I had as well, and it's very well-screened in the, the, the top of the wall, to keep people from falling over the wall on, from the west, because that's about a grade, it's only about six-foot-high, from the west side to the parking lot, there's that nice, what kind of material is that that's on top of that wall?
It's a decorative-type fence. It'd be similar to a wrought iron, some kind of wrought iron design.
Okay.
That would not be climbable. I mean, to an extent.
Again, but again, it's very aesthetically pleasing, and it's to the eye, and it's not, it's not an eyesore.
Exactly.
Okay, and wouldn't become an eyesore.
Well, I just wanted to comment that, you know, this is, this is not like the old shops that I grew up with, so I want to thank you for this. I mean, this is wonderful. You know, in the previous presentation, we talked about, there was going to be about ninety-two percent of the kids say they're going off to college. This is what we need, because there's going to be eight to ten percent that are already saying they're not. And this is what's going to get them prepared, again, for their futures, because as Kathy mentioned, we need to make sure that we have the technology that they're going to need when they get out into the workforce. And this is going to get us there. And so I want to thank you guys for that. I want to thank everybody in the community for approving this, because this is, this is wonderful. This is going to help these, these students that aspire to get into these trades, building trades, automotive trades, and things such as this. And now they got a facility that they can be proud of, something that they can walk up to, feel good about it, and really have a great learning experience for them. So again, thank you all for this. It's great. Thank you.
Other questions?
How about parking? Is there overflow areas? Do the kids drive here or bus?
Right now, approximately a third to a half of our students drive, and the other ones are transported either in vans or buses. One of the positives about being on one of the high school sites is that many of our students are Olathe North students, and so the transportation issue won't be there anymore. They'll be onsite and can walk down the sidewalk directly to the building. But we will have some buses and vans delivering, and we have, I can't speak like the architects do to it, but we have developed an area in the front where they can pull in and go down around on the far end and pull back out without bothering traffic either in the roundabout or the traffic that's flowing into Olathe North. And there will be a barrier once school starts between the Olathe North parking lots and the Mill Creek parking lots. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Kathy, while you're there, did you get any input from our, you know, business partners?
Absolutely. We've had, involved them...
What was that?
We've had several meetings. We met, myself and my staff have met with them in regard...
With them?
All welding technology advisory committee, the auto-tech advisory committee, and the auto-collision advisory committee. And we've gotten general input from them on what they would like to see. And then we had a meeting where we asked just two or three from each of those advisory committees to come back and meet with the architects for quite a long meeting that day, and have gotten a lot of input there also.
So, thank you. Harlan and I have been involved with this a long time, and so we've, I wanted you to share with the community just how widespread the input has been on this building, so.
Yes, it has. Thank you.
Other questions? Well, on behalf of the board and the community as a whole, thank you very much for being here this evening for our presentation.
And Don and Travis, thank you for your work, and we cannot wait until August 2013 to go cut the ribbon on this place.
You bet. Us too. We're anxious.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll be adjourned for comfort break until seven-ten. Okay. convene this evening for our board meeting, and after our presentations, we would like to do recognitions and awards, a really fun, fun part of our agenda this evening. And I'd like to ask our Director of Communications, Ms. Maggie Kuhl, to preside. And this evening, Ms. Amy Martin, Board Vice President, will be representing the board.
We have numerous recognitions for you tonight, and I'd like to welcome all of our distinguished guests. We're going to begin tonight with a community partner that has truly gone above and beyond the call of duty to support the Olathe Public Schools. Tonight, we are honoring the Olathe Medical Center. I'd like to ask Nicole Asquith from Business Partnerships and Cindy Von Felth from the Olathe Public Schools Foundation to come forward to help with the recognition. I'd also like to welcome our distinguished guests from the Olathe Medical Center to the front of the room, Nancy Ingram, Volunteer Services Manager, and Lacey Kane, Public Relations Specialist. The Olathe Medical Center is an important community partner, giving thousands of hours of volunteer time to our district through the Bridging Education and Medicine Program, Play Hospital, and other community outreach projects. Their contributions to the Olathe Public Schools Foundation have supported grant projects since the incorporation of the foundation. Olathe Medical Center has played a part in each major endeavor the foundation has taken on over the years. Last month at the foundation breakfast, the Olathe Medical Center was honored for reaching the million-dollar giving mark in support of our foundation's work throughout the district. And now we'd like to take a quick moment to watch a short video about the contributions made by the Olathe Medical Center. When the Olathe Public Schools Foundation was launched, the Olathe Medical Center stepped up to provide a consistent annual gift that would give the foundation the opportunity to hit the ground running. Now sixteen years and one million dollars later, the partnership has grown to provide amazing opportunities for students in the Olathe Public Schools.
Each year, our first graders go to Olathe Medical Center to experience Play Hospital. It's a wonderful learning excursion for two reasons. First, it takes the mystery away from a visit to the doctor, so then it's not so scary when they need to go see a doctor. And second, it gets kids thinking about careers in medicine, and that maybe one day, they may want to be a doctor or a nurse.
I had so much fun when I went to the Play Hospital. I used to be scared for what they would do to me when I went to a medical center, but now I'm not. It was also really fun seeing my friends help out the nurses and get x-rays.
I really had fun on my field trip to the Play Hospital. I went to the emergency room last week, and I wasn't scared because I knew what they were going to do.
I like Play Hospital because it shows how x-rays show your bones. Nurses and doctors aren't scary. I learned that you should cough and sneeze into your elbow so that you won't spread any germs.
Bridging Education and Medicine is a program that my students at Olathe South High School have an opportunity to intern at the med center for eight to ten hours each week.
I've been really interested in going into pharmacy, so I want to major in like pre-pharmacy, pry up at like KU or something, and then become a pharmacist. I get to go up on each of the floors a lot and like put stuff into like their Pyxis machines, and I get to work with like a lot of the drugs and see kind of how the IVs are made and kind of how things are entered into like their database to see, you know, what all goes on during the pharmacy hours. The people at Olathe Med are really nice, like they're always been really friendly. Like, I'll walk down the hallway, just go in the hospital, and like everyone you pass says hi to you and asks you like how you are, and especially the people in the pharmacy. Like, I'll sometimes stand with different people when my mentor isn't there, and they're always really nice and, you know, showing me different things and answering my questions and, you know, trying to teach me a little bit something new every single day.
From the sports med perspective, that the 21st century program that is held at Olathe North High School, we are so appreciative to Olathe Med Center for allowing our students the opportunity to be a part of their team of physicians, nurses, imaging staff. Our students are able to observe surgeries. They are able to go into patients' rooms and see all the technology that is in place. If Olathe Med Center wasn't our business partner, and they weren't able to open their door and allow our students to do this, everything would be in the classroom.
As part of my internship, every day I get to go in and watch them interact with the patients. And then about once a week or so, I get to go in and watch them actually perform the surgeries. And I get to be right next to the doctor and see everything that they do. I've seen a full knee replacement. I've seen a couple scopes. This week, I get to see a full ACL reconstruction. I never thought that being in high school, I'd be able to go in and watch a full knee reconstruction and be able to view that and see everything, and especially staying right behind the doctor and getting to see everything he does.
From day one, the Olathe Medical Center has been there to support the Olathe Public Schools Foundation. With their consistent annual gifts to the foundation, they've supported programs like Project Graduation, the Olathe Youth Congress. They've provided scholarships for our college-bound seniors, and they've supported our Student Health Emergency Fund. They've leveraged other community supporters to help put walking trails in Ridgeview Elementary and at Fairview. The list goes on and on. They have been there for every major project we've tackled for the last sixteen years.
We are so grateful to the Olathe Medical Center for everything that they do for the Olathe Public Schools. And they support us more than just financially. They provide so many opportunities for our students to learn and grow. OMC is a great partner for the school district.
Thank you, Olathe Medical Center, for the opportunity to be able to intern, especially in the pharmacy. It's been so great, and I really appreciate everyone that works with me and has, I have the best time ever at Olathe Med, and I really love it.
Thank you so much, Olathe Medical Center, for putting Play Hospital together. I had
Thank you once again to the Olathe Medical Center for all that you do to support the Olathe Public Schools. You truly are a shining example of partners in education.
I just wanted to take a moment to say a few words to all of you. Lacey and I are bringing greetings from Mr. Devisell and our leadership at Olathe Health System. But I wanted to just tell everyone that partnerships like this come with a great deal of vision, planning, and thoughtful consideration. And it's amazing to see how the programs have grown, so many of them that have remained the same and true through those sixteen years, and to see how some have changed to match the needs and how those needs have changed. Your students are the benefactors, but in reality, we as a community are all benefactors when your students and our students are prepared for their future. It is with honor that we participate in your recognition, but please understand, Lacey and I represent a multitude of professionals on our campus who are committed to programs in cooperation with the Olathe School District. So thank you for the recognition, and we look forward to many years ahead. Thank you.
Next, we will be recognizing various members of the district's counseling department for their recent efforts and accomplishments. I'd like to ask Larry Katsev, Director of Student and Community Development, to come forward to help with the recognition. Honor is, I will call the awards and recognitions one by one, but if you would all stay up at the front until all the awards have been given for the counseling program, we'll get a big group photo at the end. Our first recognition is Rita Hastings, Counselor at Fairview Elementary. Rita, would you come forward along with Fairview Principal Camille Roy? Our first, Rita is the district nominee for the Kansas State Department of Education Counselor of the Year Award. Colleagues describe Rita as someone who will do whatever it takes to meet the needs of students, families, and staff. She is a best friend to all, and the staff at her school say they feel lucky to have Rita as their counselor. Congratulations, Rita, on your nomination. Next, we'd like to honor two schools whose counseling departments earn counseling awards from the Kansas State Department of Education. With the following people, please come forward. Marva Lee Collins, Counselor at Sunnyside Elementary; David Kearney, Principal at Sunnyside Elementary; Gina Bruner; Angie Salava; David Heinen; Jennifer Notboom, Counselors at Olathe Northwest; and Gwen Pass, Principal at Olathe Northwest. Sunnyside Elementary School received the Standard of Excellence Award for its counseling program, and Olathe Northwest High School received the Program of Excellence Award. The awards were presented at the annual Fall Counselor Conference at Emporia State on November 3. The Kansas State Department of Education developed the awards based on the Recognized American School Counselor Association Model Program. The awards are presented to schools that demonstrate a high degree of alignment with the comprehensive school counseling program and the multi-tiered system of supports. The Program of Excellence Award recognizes schools that demonstrate Kansas best practices through an online application process, while the Standard of Excellence Award honors those that not only demonstrate best practices through their application, but also submit samples of their work in Our final counseling recognition tonight honors our middle-school counselors. The following counselors, please come forward. California Trails Sue Sandbothy; Oregon Trails Janet Bachnik; Pioneer Trails Rhonda Peck; Frontier Trails Kathy Thorpe; Prairie Trails Cindy Hay; Mission Trails Mark Munson; Santa Fe Trails Paul Giffen. Fe Trails Paul Giffen; and Chisholm Trails Brenda Robinson... Oh, Indian Trails Margaret Smith. Sorry. For the past four years, the middle school counselors have organized a very successful career expo for our Olathe eighth graders to attend. It takes place each fall at Johnson County Community College, featuring representatives from many various careers. In addition, the facilitators from all of the Olathe Twenty-First Century High School programs are present with their students to give the eighth graders exposure to their programs. This year's career expo took place on October 26th. This core group of counselors has given much time and commitment to creating a professional and positive experience for our students. And we'd like to thank all of our counselors in the district for the work that you do to help our students. You truly make a big difference in the lives of everyone in the Olathe Public Schools. So, thank you very much. Next, we will honor a group of district's staff members for their hard work on the 2011 United Way campaign. Would the following United Way committee members please come forward? Randy Salisbury, Olathe North; Corbin Trimble, Bentwood Elementary; Nancy Cheatham from the Education Center; and two other committee members, Lane Green and Rebecca Verbus couldn't be here with us tonight. Due to the generosity of our staff members and the hard work of those five individuals, the district's campaign raised a record total of $108,326.19. Nearly 57% of district staff supported this year's campaign. This is the fourth consecutive year the district campaign has surpassed $100,000. Scores of people, including our building reps, went above and beyond in leading, encouraging, promoting, organizing, tallying, emailing, and delivering contributions. Thank you for all your hard work in raising money for this wonderful cause. This money will help, truly help our community in a variety of ways. Congratulations. And we have one final special recognition tonight. I'd like to ask Board Member Lieta Felter to come forward. It has come to our attention that Ms. Felter was recently honored at an Olathe City Council meeting by the Department of the Army with a Certificate of Appreciation for Patriotic Civilian Service. Ms. Felter was recognized for her efforts in helping to make the Stand for Spencer event a successful memorial for one of our fallen soldiers, Spencer Duncan, a 2008 graduate of Olathe South. The certificate she received from the Army read, "With sincere appreciation from the Aviation Support Facility Olathe and the soldiers of Bravo and Delta Companies, Seventh Battalion, 158th Aviation Regiment, we thank you wholeheartedly for your support during the time of need following the tragic events of August 6, 2011. It truly demonstrates a spirit of patriotism from our community that is inspiring and a shining example of what makes this country great." Wonderful words from the Army. Congratulations, Lieta, and thank you for all you do for our community. And that concludes our recognitions tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Martin, Dr. Berry, and Ms. Cullum. In January, we will have a large contingent to recognize because we've had a lot of great successes in the last thirty days, and those groups will be recognized in January. We just didn't have enough time to bring them in this evening and do an appropriate recognition for them, so that will be at our January board meeting to look forward to after the holidays. At this point in time in our agenda...
Mr. Parker?
Yes, sir.
Can I just make a comment?
Sure, Mr. Pollan. I'm sorry, thank you, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry.
No, no.
You know, I just like to recognize what a great community we have, and this partnership we have with the Olathe community, with the hospital, the Olathe Medical Center, I mean, you know, all this... That's what differentiates Olathe from surrounding areas, is this partnership we have with the whole community. And what Lieta did with, you know, with, you know, recognizing Spencer Duncan, you know, there's just so much in this community that is great that we don't take, I guess we don't sit back and say, "Hey, this is a great community we live in." And so I just want to let us all take time to pause and say, "Hey, you know, Olathe is a good place to live, and it's because of the people everywhere around this city." And so I just want to recognize that, so.
Very well said. You bet. Very well spoken. At this point, thank you, Mr. Pollan. At this point in time in our agenda, we would take time for public comments. At each regular meeting of the Board of Education, we reserve limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect the privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped, recorded for broadcast on the district educational access channel, and audiotape recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name and address. At the time of the meeting, there was not anyone who had registered to make public comments, but we'd still reserve time if there's anyone in the audience that would like to make public comments at this time. Being done, then we would move forward on our agenda. We would be at that point in time where we would look at the consent agenda. These are actions that are typically taken as a matter of consent for the board, however, the board member can request a particular item to be removed for separate consideration should they choose to do so. Are there any board members who would like to ask questions or remove items from the consent agenda at this particular time? Being done, I would call for motion then.
I move to approve Consent Agenda items numbered 3.01 through 3.12 as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. A motion by Ms. Martin and a second by Mr. Pollan to approve further consent agenda. Ms. Hibbs, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Thank you. That would move us to item 7.01, which is a future action item, computer bid. Any questions in regards to this future action item? I have one for the benefit of the public. I think this is a big-ticket item, so it'd be probably good for Ms. Rita, Ms. Lyon, to go ahead and kind of just give us a executive summary of what we're going to be talking about next month and what we're going to be doing.
Sure. The bid that we are... Actually, we have released the bid. It is for laptop computers to replace the oldest of our old laptop computers. This is critical for us. The laptop computers are heavily used for assessment. Assessment starts... Mary, I'm going to refer to you. What's the earliest day of assessment this coming spring?
They're already testing right now.
Well, okay, so they're already there, but it... We really, we really need them in place by mid-February for the critical assessment. And in order to do that, we've kind of got to keep pushing forward on this. If we don't bring this bid to the board until February, it's, we're probably looking at summer installation before we do that because we would not want to interrupt the assessment process by bringing new computers in at that time. So, that's the laptop piece of that.
That's all hardware.
It's all hardware. Desktops would be replacing desktops in middle school and elementary, library and administrative offices. Those are also the oldest of our old. And then the other piece that you see on that bid is memory for some machines that are in that three-and-a-half to five-and-a-half-year range. We feel like if we can spend $50 on memory on those machines, we can get another couple years out of those machines.
It's a matter of putting in a new card, then? Is that correct?
Memory sticks, yes.
Okay.
So, that's what it's about.
Tell how much the average memory is right now.
You know, I think the last bid quote we got, and it changes daily, it's kind of like copper, you know, it changes daily. I think it was $16 a stick, but they've ranged from 13 to 24 to 25. They're fairly expensive.
I mean, don't most of them operate right now on one gigabyte?
Yes. Yes. We've been fortunate enough to upgrade a significant number within the past couple of months, but this next round, we really needed to place it out to bid because it was a larger quantity. Yeah, one gig, we'll just barely cut it these days.
That was surprising to read that.
Yeah.
So, Rita, if this comes in as an action item in January, that will give enough time to get the computers in and get them ready for testing in February?
Definitely enough time on the laptops. The desktops, you know, that doesn't impact the classroom as much because we're looking at administrative offices and libraries, but the laptops are really the critical piece for us. So, coming in with a January bid for approval, and if that's approved, we feel like we definitely can push back on the vendor and require them to have them onsite here by the middle of February.
Can you speak a little bit to how the bid process works? Do you put it out to so many, or do they come to us? And how many do you put the bid out to?
Sure. It's Scott Carpenter. He's not with us tonight, but I can kind of explain that process, and John is here. About a year or so ago, we moved to an online bidding process. It's through publicpurchase.com. We have thirty-seven technology vendors that are registered on that site to receive any bid that has anything to do with technology. Of course, not all of those will build on laptops or memory or whatever, but the various aspects of technology. They go online, they then register. When a bid comes out, it automatically sends that information with all the attachments and all the bid documents to that vendor. They bid right online. When the bid closes, we almost instantly have the responses for those bids. John, anything you want to add to that bid process?
It's very, very slick. We're really excited to be able to push this into an online bidding process because it opens it up to a lot more vendors, and it's really a, it's a very nice, clean way to see what's going on with the bid process.
Nice and efficient.
Yes, we like that.
And then is the bidding to make the decision on that, it's not just, always just the lowest bid? Is there other criteria that we look at?
Well, certainly, they have to meet the specs of the bid. So, we have outlined in the bid documents that they receive all of the specs of the laptop that they have to provide. If there's some services in that, then, you know, you have to make sure that they're going to meet all of those services. Two of the three bids that we're putting out really don't have any services, are what we call drop ship. The memory, just ship it to us, we'll take care of it. The laptops, ship them to us, we're going to take care of it. The desktop computers does have, do have services because we require the vendor to bring them in to the school at a time that's not disruptive to the classroom, unpack them, set them all up, and remove all of the trash and the materials that come along with that. So, there's some services with the desktops. So, to answer your question, if they meet the specs of the bid, then yes, in that, in a drop ship bid like that, it is low bid, as long as they meet the specs.
I'm just kind of curious, because as you go out, personally go out and shop things, there's always name brands, some name brands you think are better than other name brands, and sometimes whether it's the pricing or not, that's why I was curious, if it's just a low bid, or do we take some of those things into consideration of the value of it from that standpoint? You know, a Honda versus a Mercedes or something such as that based on pricing?
And you probably noticed, let me give you a little bit of history. We are standardized on HP. That happened through several years of bids where HP won the bids. Once we have so much of that equipment in, it's much more efficient and less costly for us to stay with one platform unless there's a reason to move to a different platform. The price difference between an HP, a Dell, a Lenovo is probably a dollar or two with the exact same specs and footprint of that computer. So, we are an HP shop, but even if we have settled on a specific brand, there's many, many vendors that can bid that particular line. Where you will see bids come in in the future, where you don't have a variety of vendors bidding, is Apple. Apple is a one-source vendor. They don't, they don't resell through education for anybody but from Apple.
Mr. Hutchinson, you have a comment?
I was just going to say, the terminology is lowest responsive, responsible bidder. So, if you're low, if you meet the scope, and you don't have a past track record of bad performance, if you meet those three criteria, you're in.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lyon. The next future action item would be the Head Start Personnel Policies and Head Start Governance's Education Work and Management Work Plans. Dr. Berry, you kind of want to give us a...
Really, these items that we have to bring to you are part of regulations from the federal government that say we have to share in the governance of these programs, and so they are brought before Boards of Education, basically so that you're aware of the structure, but there is a separate board that actually works and governs these programs and meets representing the different school districts that are involved. So, it's really just formality in terms of bringing these before Board of Education for approval.
Any questions? Then, future action item 7.03 would be Process for Student Suspension Expulsion Appeal Hearings. For the benefit of the public, one of the responsibilities of the board is to listen, take appeals from students who may have been unfortunately suspended from their school for disciplinary reasons. They have the right, after they've had a hearing, to appeal that to the board, and so what the board is going to do here is going to discuss and talk about our options in regards to how we handle those. In the past, we have handled them as a board, with a quorum of the board to do the hearing. It's always held in confidentiality to protect the identity of the student under Kansas law. So, but now, because of Kansas law, we were going to discuss this in open session if we would like to look at other options in regards to how we handle appeal hearings in the future. And this would be an action item in January if we wanted to make any changes. Dr. Berry, would you tell us, kind of give us a little bit of a background of what our options are?
Certainly. Again, as you said, by statute, Kansas allows a full Board of Education to meet and make the decision on the appeal, and of course, then with that full board, the action that you take at the time of that hearing is confirmed. Two other methods are allowed by state statute. One is that the Board of Education can name a hearing officer, and that can be a certificated person from the district, meaning usually an administrator. That can be the hearing officer. Or, the Board of Education can also name a smaller board component, hearing officer, single board member, two board members, three board members, anything short of a full meeting, then you could have as a hearing board to hear that appeal. State statute would then say, if you hear it by a certificated employee or a smaller portion of the board, you still make a decision on that hearing, but then it would have to come to the full board then for confirmation at the next regular school board meeting. And at that time, then, the board will take action on the results of that appeal from the hearing officers, and they can either do that with or without additional hearing. So, there are a lot of things to think about in that process as you come through. So, we have a student that unfortunately is suspended. They go through the hearing process, they have due process as given to them by state statutes, but if they don't like the outcome, they can appeal it to the Board of Education. If the Board of Education had a process where two board members heard the appeal, they can make a decision that evening for that appeal hearing, but then it would come before the full board at the next regular meeting. And again, at that point, you either do it on a consent agenda and confirm the decision of the two board members, or three board members, or one board member, or you would have to decide if you wanted to have additional hearing and basically go through it again and hear from the student and/or parents as directed by the attorney and have that file.
you still make a decision on that hearing, but then it would have to come to the full board then for confirmation at the next regular school board meeting. And at that time, then, the board will take action on the results of that appeal from the hearing officers. And they can either do that with or without additional hearing. So there are a lot of things to think about in that process as you come through. So we have a student that unfortunately is suspended. They go through the hearing process, they have due process as given to them by state statutes. But if they don't like the outcome, they can appeal it to the Board of Education. If the Board of Education had a process where two board members heard the appeal, they can make a decision that evening for that appeal hearing, but then it would come before the full board at the next regular meeting. And again, at that point, you either do it on a consent agenda and, and confirm the decision of the two board members, or three board members, or one board member. Or you would have to decide if you wanted to have additional hearing and basically go through it again and hear from the student and/or parents as directed by the attorney and, and have that for another session, and then make a decision that night. Typically, our suspension appeal, appeals are about an hour in length or a little bit more.
I think there's also a requirement that once, once the student makes the appeal, we have to meet, meet that appeal within a certain number of days?
Within twenty days.
Within twenty days. And, and if we chose to go with the, with the hearing officers, then that would be the same requirement. It would have to be done in twen, within, within that timeframe.
Same requirement.
Then, i- in regards to the law, I think there's a question, once the hearing officer or officers hear the case, then that has to come to the board within a certain stipulated amount of time?
They actually have five days to make the decision. And in our district, we always make it the night of the hearing, but they have five days. But now the state statute says it just has to come at the next regularly scheduled board meeting.
So if we were to decide to change this, then the hearing officers would hear it, would say, we've heard it, and then that would be the end of the, of the proceeding at that particular time?
Because they will make a decision and say, we uphold the suspension, or we repeat.
At that particular time?
Yes. Whoever the hearing officer.
What's with the five days? I don't understand the five days.
The state statute says that you can take up to five days to make the decision.
So we, so the hearing officers wouldn't necessarily have to make a decision at that point in time?
Just like right now, when the full board hears it on a, like a Monday night when you had a hearing appeal, you could take up to five days to make the decision. But you'd have to come back together as a board to make that decision.
Or the, or if you had a hearing, okay, but if it was a hearing officer or hearing officers, they could, in five days, they could, wouldn't have to make the decision at that point in time. They could say, we want to deliberate and come back and make a decision in five. So you have to reconvene and bring everybody back?
If it's the full board, you have to do that. If it's the hearing officers, they would have to get together and make the decision. It's delivered to the parents and the student.
And bring them, bring the, the, the parties back to the?
I don't believe so.
Or just do it by letter or phone call? Probably a letter.
It's immediate notification probably, so whatever's the fastest.
Okay.
As we're sharing the process with the public, would you explain to the public what has happened before it gets to the board?
Well, as I said, students have due process for any behavior that.
What is that due process? I know, and I'd like the process, before it gets to us, what has happened?
Okay.
Before it even gets to us.
It's very much spelled out in state statute, but at the school site, if a student gets in trouble, and it's something that by our code of conduct would maybe indicate that they would be suspended from school, principals have at their discretion by state law, short-term suspension rights. And the, the initial due process is that student is called into the office, and it's explained to that student why they're in trouble in terms of what they've done and to violate the code of conduct. They have a chance to respond to the principal and share their side of the story. And then the determination is made by the principal. By state statute, they can only suspend students on a short-term basis, up to ten days. Parents are notified, students are picked up or sent home, and, and they serve their ten-day suspension. During that time, and we have a certain amount of time, hours at the initial part of that suspension, that if the school determines it's a behavior that's going to go long-term, long-term suspension for the remainder of the semester, or expulsion for the remainder of the year, then that takes additional due process. And that comes to a hearing here at the district level. Our staff counsel, Scott Mason, is actually the one that leads those hearings. There's a three-person panel that will hear it. Again, the, the student has the right to be there with parents and can have representation if they want. And then also the school, of course, principals or administrator or teacher, whoever might be involved, presents the case. And that three-person committee at the district level makes a decision in terms of whether that student is indeed long-term suspended or expelled. And then again, if parents or the student are not satisfied with that, that's the appeal of the long-term, which kicks up to the Board of Education currently.
Dr. Berry?
Oh, go ahead, Dr. Daniels, go ahead.
Are you sure? Our, our attorney attends the meeting as it currently is in front of the board. Has, does, does Mr. Norris also attend the appeal that occurs prior to it coming to the board?
Yes, because many times he testifies at that appeal in terms of what happened at the actual hearing. The principal's also present again, or administrator to, to testify again.
Okay. So if we were to go to a, a different set of circumstances, where two or three or four board members did a hearing, and then it came before the full board again, there might be a need to have Mr. Norris present a third time?
If you decide to have a hearing as part of that confirmation, and again, state statute and the attorneys at KASB say as a board, you can do it either way. You can just take the smaller hearing officer's decision and confirm it, or you can say, it's coming to the board and we'll hear it again.
So if we were to do a hearing, then that would provide additional cost to the district if, if we added that third hearing?
It would be like repeating the first appeal hearing, yes.
Okay. And then secondly, were we to do it by consent agenda, there would be no, then there would be an implicit understanding? Let me back up. Would we need to go into executive sessions so that the board members who heard the case could discuss it with other board members? Trying to visualize what happens as there is during current times when there are questions or disagreements among board members? So I'm trying to figure out what that process.
Right. And it's a good question, and it reminds me, I left a step out, as being, I was being tested on my school law here. If you have a hearing officer or officers hear it in a small group, and they make the decision that night or within five days, they are required to submit a full written report about the hearing to the full Board of Education. So you would receive a report immediately in writing that would tell about the case and the outcome. So you would have a background before that night of the item.
Would that be public record?
I don't believe so. I think it's just to the Board of Education.
That would be something that would have to be written and hand-delivered for confidentiality reasons?
Yeah. In, in some manner, obviously, we'd get it to you. Then on a consent agenda, many times like an HR report, sometimes there are no names. It's just confirmation of action or minimal information.
But really, I think Dr. Daniels, the point she's trying to make is that if we, if we appoint one or more of ourselves to do the hearing, we, we really have no choice but to go with their decision unless we want to have another hearing.
Exactly.
Okay.
I guess, I, I, having done this for eleven years now, and sat on a lot of painful appeal hearings and wished I could be anyplace but there, having looked through the process, I mean, part of what I value about my other board members being there is that everybody brings a different perspective to, to those decisions. And sometimes, sometimes it would seem very cut and dry, and other times it isn't. And so because I'm a cup-half-empty kind of girl, I'm looking out to those times where someone might get a written opinion from two or three of us and go, don't agree, or need more information. And, and I guess I just see at, adding work to the current board. And, and I'm not opposed to trying it, but I, having done this a long time and having, having watched us painfully come to unanimous decisions, I just see that we'd be maybe having a third hearing when two hearings are, are, seem to be sufficient for most decisions. So that's just my thought.
And I would agree with you, because now, to your point, we're adding some additional expense resources, but we're dragging it out for the families also.
That's very true.
In some of those cases, so. I just want to make sure that, that, that is the case, that we, we would be dragging it out. Because again, if you've got twenty days after the, for the hearing, and you've got five days to make a decision, then you have to wait till the next board meeting, which if you just had one, that could be another twenty-some days out possibly. The student and. Student and family get that record from the school office that says we intend to go long-term suspension. They actually have ten days before they have to appeal. Then it's twenty days that the board would have to hear it within. So yeah, it does extend it out.
Have we historically always had the same model of hearing? How about neighboring school districts? Do we know anything about that?
I think there's a variety of models, from lesser number of board members as we described, and, or, or maybe the superintendent is the one that hears the appeal, or an outside attorney. I didn't hear you volunteer that. I did not, but I do take other duties as assigned, so if.
I think if we, if we were to decide to go with the hearing officers, then we would have to decide a process of how we were going, we could appoint the superintendent as a hearing officer. That would be an option.
Yes, that is an option.
I think it's important to have a hearing officer or officers who are somewhat removed from the day-to-day administrative duties. I, I think it just brings a, I, I think the opinion, the, the perception would be, not that you would do this, Dr. Berry, but the perception might be a rubber stamp. Whereas if you remove it another level, I think there's an opportunity for a broader point of view.
Ms. Felder, yeah, as long as I've been on the board, it's, we've always done it as a board, a quorum of the board. At least four board members have, have heard the appeal and made the decision on appeal at that eve, that evening, and rendered a decision, sometimes with two or two, two and a half hour of discussion. But we get to a, we get to a, a decision. That's the way the boys have done it in the past.
I guess I should speak up because I'm the individual who asked to have this brought to the board for discussion and a possible revision of the process. And the reason for my request is that, as board members, there are huge demands on our time. And we got into a situation this fall where there was a need to have a hearing, and there were site council meetings going on. And each board member is connected to six to eight schools, and we try our best to attend a site council meeting at least once a year, maybe twice if your schedule permits. And the juggling of schedules got to be enormous. And that's okay, we accept that responsibility. But where I was coming from in my thought process is, the number of students and the number of parents that I'm connecting with when I go out to a site council meeting is pretty impactful, and it's very important to me. And I've attended a total of six site council meetings in the last few weeks, and it has been one of the greatest learning experiences. Every year, it's a great learning experience. I uncovered some new issues that we needed to address, connected with some parents who wanted to get involved in other ways in the district. I mean, the list goes on. And in reflecting on how we as board members can best spend our time, I felt like we needed to take a look at this hearing process because I wasn't convinced that we needed all seven board members here for an appeal hearing. And so that's a little bit of the background where I was coming from. I agree, it's a painful process. I agree, I appreciate input from other board members. But I guess I'm also saying at the same time, I trust my fellow board members to, to make good decisions. And I've sat through some of these deliberations where I did not agree with the decision that was made. So does it make a difference whether I'm here or I'm not here when a decision is made that I don't agree with? I'm trusting other board members to make that decision. And given the choice, if I have a conflict, I'd rather be at that site council meeting, talking to those fifteen parents and that principal, and finding out what's going on in, in their school. And I would trust two or three other board members to be at that hearing and, and make a good decision on that appeal.
And going along with that, that's one reason I asked for the process that went ahead of the board, the appeal to the board. It's been a very deliberate decision-making process before it even gets to us. And so I feel very comfortable in the fact that, you know, we've got staff out there that are, you know, that are trained in doing this. They know what the situation is. And, you know, I, I feel that once it gets to us, it's been pretty well vetted, been pretty well, you know, you know, you know, searched out, the decision has. And so I, I guess my decision, my thought process is, it's very difficult for us as a board to sit there and say, okay, wait a minute. All these, the processes we have up here have come to this decision. And I haven't seen very many times it hit, it has been reversed from the decision that has been made by the process ahead of us. So, you know, I would feel very comfortable in saying something, the fact that if we had something, the fact of Scott being one of the officers, and having two of us assigned every month that is, and say, hey, we're going to, this is your month to do it, just like we do with certain processes, this is your month, do it. Reserve Thursday and Tuesday and Thursday for a potential board, you know, appeal hearing. Have that on your calendar just for that month. You know, and, you know, if it, it comes down to it, then, you know, then we have a review process. And I would feel very comfortable with, with the knowledge that if some board member says, wait a minute, no, I don't, I don't feel comfortable with this, you know, then we could have an additional hearing. And I bet that would be one in one hundred that we would have an additional hearing. So I would, I would recommend, I think you've, Dr. Berry, you've received a lot of input from us board members as, as a, some thoughts, everything. And I would like to see something put together where we have just a, you know, you know, scheduled time where each of one, each of us are on, quote, on call to be a, you know, a hearing officer for that time. And like I said, if the report is not sufficient to any board member, they can always say, no way, man, I don't feel comfortable. I want a full hearing. And I'd, like I said, I bet it'll be one, less than one in one hundred that we'll actually, actually do that, so.
What would, should we change the policy to where it reflects two members or three members or whatever? What would the process be? I guess I'm trying to visualize, could, if, if it was Lieta and Mike and myself, and we were hearing it, and a parent didn't agree with, with our decision, would Mr. Parker get a phone call? Would Mrs. Martin get a phone call prior to the board meeting? Would Mrs. Ashley? I'm asking, I, I, I can think of one board member who probably would get a lot of phone calls. So, I, I don't know. I mean, I don't know if we know what will happen unless we play it out.
How would, how would that change from the way it is now?
I think in that regard, the way it is now is, we've met as a board, a quorum of the board, so it was a decision of the board.
Right.
It's a final. And there's no appeal beyond that. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
Whereas now, as.
The way it is now.
The way it is now.
Right. If we use hearing officers, and the hearing officer's saying five days uphold the appeal, and the parents are, or their attorney are not satisfied with that, I could see them making appeal to the entire board.
I don't think that's.
In the meantime, between.
Well, see, you would be taking action at the next regular board meeting. So let's say we had an appeal hearing three weeks ago, and two of you heard it and made a decision. And so it has to be confirmed at tonight's meeting. The likelihood is that, yes, you would have people contact you between the time of three weeks ago and tonight, and/or be present tonight, knowing that you were going to be making the decision as a board, because you have to confirm that. If it's less than the four board members hearing the appeal, you can't take action. It's just a decision.
And it would be the same way if we had a hearing officer. In other words, we had, Mr. Mason, as I understand it in visiting with Dr. Berry, would not be eligible to be a hearing officer because he hears the first time. So he could not be, do the period, the appeal hearing, as an example. But suppose that we decided that Mr. Hutchison was going to get to be the hearing officer? And Mr. Hutchison said, no, I, you know, I'm not, I'm going to uphold the, the, I'm not going to uphold the appeal. Well, and he renders that decision in five, in five days. Well, everybody says, that's just one, the hearing officer, I want to talk to, I want to hear from the board. Because at, at the end of the day, the board has to make the decision.
Then what if we have four board members as opposed to seven?
Then, then it's a full board meeting, and you can take action that night, just like we're currently doing.
And why not have four on call the third, Thursday of the month? To me, we need to be very expedient about this and not create more layers to our bureaucracy.
A part of the issue is coordinating it with our board attorney. That's why the timing is an issue.
And sometimes the, the parents or student's attorney, yes.
And also, sometimes one of those four board members may have a conflict of interest and may not be able to be a part of the panel. All right, so, so we've discussed this and.
And now if everybody knows how much.
And I'm going to, I'm going to say that I have all the respect for opinions that have been voiced this evening. And however, and, and I'm not averse to change, but in this case here, I would not be in, in favor of changing it. So I'll, I'll say that tonight, but we'll make it an action item for next month, and we'll just call the roll. Would that be, we'll put it on and say, if we want to change it to go to a hearing officer, I mean, that would be our choice.
Well, I'd like to have more specifics than just a hearing officer.
Yeah, I need to know what, what. I need to know what we were, yeah.
Well, the options then would be three or fewer board members or a certificated employee, like a deputy.
As a hearing officer.
As a hearing officer.
Well. I would like to make it very specific that it shouldn't be Dr. Barry.
I understand, Dan, I was.
I mean.
Agreed. Well, now, okay, yeah. So, there's multiple choices here. Choice number one would be to leave it as it is.
Correct.
Full board. A choice number two would be to use hearing officers and use board members, either one, two, or three.
Correct.
Board members.
Correct.
As hearing officers, or use a certificated hearing officer.
Exactly.
So those would be the three choices.
Should we do just an unofficial headcount tonight to see if there's enough interest on the part of board members to go ahead with a change?
I don't know that we have this as an action item, so I don't know that we can call a poll or anything like that.
I think we could work, ask for consensus, just to people respond, so we get in some direction, but it's not action or a vote.
Okay, all right.
Wouldn't another option be to have a minimum quorum of board members? In other words, the way we, the way we handle it now is, it's like an all-call, and we could have all seven here, or we could have six, five, or four here. So one of the choices would be that we would always have a minimum of four.
Which is kind of what we're trying to do now, we always work till we get four, and then we're okay. I think we determine that.
What we could do is maybe, in regards to the policy, say, okay, we have four board members who are, for this quarter, who are first in line for appeal hearings. If there is a conflict of interest, or a conflict of schedules, or illness, or family emergency, then we'd have alternates, first alternate and a second alternate. Basically, that's kind of what we do now, but we can formalize the process.
We put it out, and who's available is available till we hit four.
Isn't that what you're doing now, Mrs. Hibs, is just going down the roll until you get four?
Yes.
Praying. Yeah.
Right.
But what you're saying, Mr. Parker, is that we try to formalize it so it might be spread more equally among board members, which I still, I guess.
As it is now.
Laughing, I don't see that happening, because I just see everybody's, I see schedules as so diverse that I think the easiest thing is to just let Mrs. Hibs call until she gets four.
We're not getting any communication now when there are four board members who've agreed to be here. So we show up sometimes, and there are five, six, seven of us here. What I was suggesting is that, when we get four board members, then an email goes out of whatever and says, hey, we have four board members for the hearing, the rest of you, you know, it would be voluntary if you were to come to the hearing, is what I was suggesting.
I could see, hard to find four board members, everybody's ducking out and saying, well, who's, who hasn't been there, and who have you asking?
Wait 24 hours to respond to the email.
I'm sorry, this is serious here.
We're making light of this, and it is serious.
It's serious, we're correct.
And I don't want anyone to think we're not respectful of students having the opportunity to appeal a decision, because it's an important process. And I guess I just, I feel like it's one of our duties. So if we're just looking at a consensus for change, I'm probably not interested in any of the first three, but I could go for a quorum of four board members.
I'd be supportive of that.
As would I.
So we're making a decision without making a decision?
No, we're just wasting our opinions. Well, I think if someone feels.
We're wasting our time and not staff's time, so I think it's a good decision here.
Well, that was the other thing I was thinking of, is someone having to write up our decision for the rest of the board, and I was pretty sure I was gonna direct that to someone else, and not me. So, and then I was worried about that additional work as well.
I think, I think this is, it's an important discussion for us to have, because if the district grows, I think we may be faced, in the future, with having to make this decision if we start to experience more of these appeals hearings. I'm comfortable leaving it the way it is and letting Mrs. Hibs juggle us. I'm pretty confident that all of us do step forward when we're available.
Sure.
And we don't hold out to be the last one to send the email. And so I have confidence in my fellow board members to continue to make it work the way it stands.
So I think in years past, the district worked pretty hard to try and get all seven and find that night, so we've kind of relaxed that, and that will be our formal guideline now, that we'll work to get four on a night that works and communicate that out to all of you, and just, I think that'll work okay. All right, we'll move forward that way with just guidelines.
Thank you for that discussion. So then, the next thing on the agenda were information, written reports, Fall Parent Teachers Conferences, and Head Start Monthly Director's Report. Any questions or comments on that?
I have to brag on Head Start, they are just phenomenal. I've just gotten involved, and I'm so impressed with how the whole organization over there is run. Kim Sills does a great job, and the kids are amazing, the families are involved in the policy council. I really think it could be life-changing for these families, they're learning business processes and the meat and potatoes of how things run, so they do a great job.
Thank you, as always, for the detailed information on parent-teacher conferences.
Yeah, thank you. Then, we had 9.01, which are topics for discussion. Board members will have an opportunity to bring up topics for discussion that are not on the agenda.
I have one I'd like to ask for a report or information on, in the Olathe link. I saw that Olathe is doing great on the diversion of 35% of the trash, so recycling what used to go into the landfill. And Johnson County is now enacting the new trash plan, trying to get to the 30% mark, so, and this is just residential, but with us having 54 buildings, how are we handling this and trying to get better each year on reducing the waste?
Sure, we could bring back a program that would wrap that in with some energy efforts that we've had in recycling, and we can certainly do that.
Superintendent's comments.
Well, I thought for a little bit, maybe a couple of you gentlemen had gotten K-State to hold the game for you, since we've been so long, but it's halftime and they are ahead 32 to 29. That's part of my report, I guess, tonight. We've had some great news recently, and it bears repeating, obviously, so I'm gonna go through this quickly, though, but you have heard, and we put something up in the lobby tonight, and there's something at the back table about the Kansas City Metro Battle of the Brains. The Olathe School District had three of the final top 10, and we had the winner, Olathe North Distinguished Scholars Team Champions of Battle of the Brains. Over 550 teams entered, $50,000 for the school for STEM activities, science, technology, engineering, and math. So extremely exciting. And I'm to announce to you tonight that we are gonna hold a reception for the winning team on February 29th at 7:00 PM at the Culinary Arts Room Restaurant at Olathe North, and the school is planning that, and you're all invited to come help recognize those winners for a wonderful championship. Second bit of good news that we continue to ride, because we're so excited, there are over 30,000 teachers in Kansas, and they all have the opportunity to be up for recognition as Teacher of the Year, and the Olathe Public School District has the Kansas Teacher of the Year in Tiffany Richard. So it's very exciting for us, she will go on to national competition, but it's a wonderful recognition, a science and avid teacher at Olathe East High School, so we're very pleased. We will also be recognizing Tiffany, along with other winners from our district, past winners of Teacher of the Year at the January board meeting, so we can look forward to that. Then last Saturday, a chilly Saturday in Topeka at Jäger Stadium, but Olathe South won the 6A, Class 6A Football Championship in exciting fashion. Mr. Parker recounted that for a meeting the other day and told the story again, it's extremely exciting how that game went back and forth, but, you know, wonderful accomplishment for that school and a lot of kids and students involved in many ways. I got home and my wife said, were the kids dressed appropriately? And I said, yeah, some had shorts on. That's just kind of the way that is. We've gotten word today that several of our students have received nominations from Congressman Yoder and the 3rd Congressional District for Service Academies, which is really exciting for us. Mitch Willis, who happens to serve on Superintendent's Advisory Council, United States Air Force Academy, and Brandon Hardman, an Olathe South student, has a nomination for the Military Academy at West Point. So now they will go through the rest of that process after being nominated, and the academies make that final decision in terms of who receives appointments for admission, but it's exciting for those kids to get the nomination from the congressman. You heard tonight, something that we wrapped up in the district this fall, the United Way Campaign, and how giving our staff was this year $108,206, the largest amount that we've ever raised. Wanted to share a quick comment, that the State School Board Convention starts tomorrow, and it's in Overland Park, and we have a number of you that are attending Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, breakout sessions, general speakers, all kinds of booths and exhibits that as school board members and administrators, we can go and pick up pieces that way. We are also prepared in the district for inclement weather, and something will be going on our webpage right away as well, in terms of explaining the process to our parents and community and students, but you are involved in that as well, and so if you do not want to get a very early morning phone call, you just need to let us know. If you'd rather hear that on the news, that can certainly happen, but if you typically are interested in getting that early morning phone call, we would be glad to do that. Another recognition piece, our executive, our Director of Communications, Maggie smiles all the time anyway, but she's been smiling big time for the last couple of weeks with all the great news things that have happened. We had another very nice article in the sports section today. Cassie Wang, who's a junior at Olathe Northwest, was named the Outstanding Golfer for the Kansas City Metro area, and not only outstanding golfer, but involved in a lot of community service and a top student. So exciting to get coverage like that for all of our activities. Also got in the mail today, a national magazine, District Administration, that comes out, goes across the country, and Olathe has a write-up in it in terms of our 21st Century Programs. Dr. Gretchen Schirck is quoted about the different programs and partnerships we have, just a small clip of a little bit of what you've heard tonight in terms of 21st Century Programs and partnerships, but exciting to have the district recognized. In fact, I had some emails from some business people in the community saying, saw that, and great recognition for the district. So a lot of positive going on right now, and we're certainly glad to report that out.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just one. If anybody wasn't at the Olathe South game, which I was not able to be there, or if even if you were there, if you want to relive it, ask Harlan to give you the relive of that last quarter. He gave it us at the meeting the other morning, and he lived it up, and so if you want to feel the emotion of the game, ask Harlan to repeat the fourth quarter.
It was a great game for the South, but also for the Olathe community, but, I mean, there's been a lot of great championships in the community, so that's just one of many in the city of champions, and so it's the one that's most recent in our memory, but I remember some other ones. I remember Brandon Weir's hit in that championship game, I'll never forget that hit. I don't remember that, that kid, that kid still remembers the hit, too, so. Just one comment from Ms. Hibs sent out this week, requests for board members to meet with, in regards to the construction and capital improvement, so we need to make sure that we coordinate times that we can get in and meet with staff to do that in the coming weeks.
And I think board members have responded, so we're all set for that.
So we need to remember that as well. Do we need an executive session this evening?
We do not.
Ooh, happy holidays. So with that, everybody, enjoy the holidays, and we'll see you next year.